I think my, my own name is spelled wrong on.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. The Piscataway Township Planning Board meeting will please come to order. Adequate notice of this meeting was provided in the following ways. Notice published in the Courier-News, notice posted on the bulletin board of the municipal building, notice posted on the bulletin board of the municipal building. Okay, ditto. Notice made available to the township clerk, notice sent to the Courier-News and the Star-Ledger. Ms. Buckley, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Waller?
Present.
Councilwoman Cahill?
Here.
Ms. Corcoran?
Here.
Reverend Kenny?
Here.
Mr. Atkins? You're muted, Alex. Hi, I see you, he's here. Uh, Mr. Ahmed?
Yes.
And Madam Chair?
Here. Um, you can see the flag over my left shoulder, would, could we all recite the pledge of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, Mr. Barlow, would you please read the open public meeting?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In keeping with the guidelines that have been disseminated by the Department of Community Affairs, the planning board has tried its best to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act through this virtual platform. There will be a public comment period for all attendees. Each member of the public shall have only one opportunity to speak during each public portion. As technology does not allow us to know if there are multiple callers on an individual phone line or logged in in a user account, we ask that if you wish to speak that you log in or dial in separately so we can recognize you as a separate individual. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand on the Zoom app, or if you have called in on the phone, press nine to unmute, unmute, excuse me. When it's your turn to speak, you'll be called upon either by name or phone number. Please speak at that time. You will be asked your name and address and will be sworn in prior to your question or comment. Thank you.
Um, can we swear the professionals in, please?
Uh, Mr. Foot, I'm gonna just swear you in. You raise your right hand, you swear the testimony you give before this board will be the whole truth?
Yes.
Okay, um. Mr. Barlow?
Madam Chair, I forgot. Mr. Farrell, I might as well swear you in now.
Okay.
Mr. Farrell, you swear the testimony you give before this board will be the whole truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that, Madam Chair.
Mm-hmm, no pardon. Um, are there any changes to our agenda tonight, Mr. Barlow?
Yes, Madam Chair. Number ten twenty-four PBO two slash twelve V Dini Communications. That has been withdrawn. Anyone is on the Zoom call for that matter, it's been withdrawn. If they want to come back before the board, they will have to refile and start the process all over again. Um, also, number eleven twenty-four PB oh eight and oh nine V L R N Properties has been postponed to December eleventh, twenty twenty-four. They had an issue with their notice and that matter um, will be heard on the December eleventh, twenty twenty-four meeting once they correct their notice issues. Those are the only changes to the agenda, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that brings us to, um, item number seven. Oh, uh, can I make, have a motion to pay the duly audited bills from the board?
I make a motion, Reverend Kenny make a motion that we pay the duly ordered bill.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that, Councilwoman Cahill.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmed?
Yes.
And Madam Chair?
Yes. Item number eight, adoption of resolution to memorialize, uh, certain items on, taken on October the ninth, twenty twenty-four.
Normally, Ms. Saunders would be here and she'd make a motion to, uh, adopt the resolution with a second, so in, in her absence, would someone else like to?
Okay.
Maybe Reverend Kenny should do that.
Uh-huh.
Okay, sorry.
Sorry. Oops. Do I have a second, please?
Mr. Atkins, second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmed?
Yes.
And Madam Chair?
Yes. Next item, please.
Reverend Kenny, we need, uh, the second one, T-Mobile. There's three resolutions.
Okay. Uh, I make a motion that, uh, uh, we memorialize T-Mobile Northeastern LLC. Twenty-four PB dash oh three.
Do I have a second, please?
Mr. Atkins, a second, yeah.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmed?
Yes.
And Madam Chair?
Yes. There's a third item, Reverend Kenny.
Greek Orthodox Community, I make a motion that, uh, we, uh, memorialize Greek Orthodox Community of New Brunswick, New Jersey. Twenty-four PB sixteen dash V seventeen V.
Second, please.
Mr. Atkins, second.
Roll call.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
And Madam Chair?
Yes. Item number nine, adoption of minutes from October the ninth, twenty twenty-four.
I make a motion that we adopt the minutes from the regular meeting of October ninth, twenty twenty-four.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Atkins, a second.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders? Oh, excuse me. Didn't write that down. Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
And Madam Chair?
Yes. Um, the next item is item number twelve, discussion Piscataway Township would like to subdivide block eleven three oh two lot two point oh three.
Thank you. Madam Chair, um, this is an application or a request by the township to subdivide block one-one-three-oh-two lot two point zero-three, also known as five-five-one Highland Avenue. Mr. Farrell is here. He's the engineer that was retained, uh, by Piscataway Township to, uh, do the site plan and I'll turn the meeting over to him. Mr. Farrell, you are under oath.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, my name is Frank Farrell, as pointed out, and I am a principal here at Grotto Engineering. Uh, we were tasked with subdividing block one-one-three-oh-two lot two point oh three into smaller lots. Uh, I'm gonna share my screen in an attempt to show you what we prepared. All right, I think I got it right. So what we should be looking at is a PDF of a three-sheet plan. Uh, right in the middle here, we have a key map. We have a zone map. Um, not terribly interesting out to themselves, but the property, uh, is fronts predominantly on Highland Avenue. Two small pieces of it, relatively speaking, also, uh, are through lots, I guess we would, we would refer them as through lots, that extend out to Park Avenue. Um, the lot, the existing lot two point oh three is just under one point seven-five acres in total. The zone that it's in is the seven point five, or seven point five, or residential zone. The minimum lot size in this zone is seven thousand five hundred square feet with a seventy-five by seventy-five uh, lot width and depth respectively. Uh, the subdivision that we prepared creates eight lots fronting on Highland Avenue and another two lots that would front on Park Avenue. All the lots, with the exception of proposed lot two point one-three, which I will zoom in on over here, are conforming lots, uh, by lot area. There's no development proposed at this time, so the, we're not, we're not talking about setbacks, although we show the, the building footprints on this plan. Um, there's no existing, or I'm sorry, there's no proposed uh, development on this lot at this time. It's strictly a subdivision. Um, and I'll point out too that, again, there's one lot that we're creating that is a slightly undersized, at forty feet rather than seventy-five feet in width. But, uh, if you look at the existing condition, there's really no way that this, this is that area, that this lot, uh, could ever have been a, a, a conforming lot. Um, so we have the, the best, the best case scenario here again is eight lots that are all uniform seventy-five by a hundred fronting on Highland, with the remaining two lots, uh, two point oh four and two point one-three fronting on Park with one variance for lot area and a second one for lot width, uh, related to lot two point one-three. That about sums up, uh, the subdivision.
Again, Mr. Farrell, this will create, um, essentially conformity out of non-conformity and, and get rid of that through lot, potential through lot condition, correct?
Correct.
Does anyone from the board have any questions of Mr. Farrell?
Um, Madam Chair, I do have one question. So, um, it creates the conforming lots on Highland Avenue, one obviously on Park, but then there's gonna be one that is not a standard lot by current ordinance. Is that correct?
That's accurate. Yes. There's, there's one, I guess we could call it an oversized lot. That would be this lot two point oh four that fronts on Park, which is a hundred and twenty feet wide and a hundred feet deep, whereas, uh, seventy-five by seventy-five is the minimum. Uh, and this second lot that fronts on Park Avenue, uh, lot two point one-three, is gonna be forty feet in width, whereas seventy-five feet is required. But again, had this not been subdivided separate from the lot fronting on Highland, you'd have a through lot condition, which is also somewhat unusual. This is, I, we believe this is the best, uh, layout and best use of the, of the lot and the property.
Um, Brenda Smith, I have a question. Um, is there any potential for purchase of, uh, property on either side of that lot to make it a little bit more conforming to the?
Uh, that's not really a question I can answer as the engineer. Um, I'm not sure who would be best poised to answer that question, but that's not really engineering. I imagine.
If I may, Frank, the town would have to, the town would have to approach the adjacent property owners to buy off some of their property and/or, I, I don't know where their houses are situated on their properties too. You know, so it's a whole nother issue.
Okay.
Um, so then, Madam Chair, since that's the case there, um, my concern would be if we subdivide that, make it a forty-foot width-wide lot, and somebody were wanting to build on there, now they don't have variances? I mean, forty wide seems pretty narrow.
They, they, correct of all, Mr. Barlow, they still would have a variance involved.
Yeah, absolutely. If someone tried, if someone purchased that lot and wanted to build on it, they would either have to build within a footprint that did not violate the side yard, front yard, and rear yard setbacks, which is build a small home to fit a smaller lot. Or if they exceeded the setbacks, and I, I presume, Mr. Farrell, your box is within, taking into account the relative setbacks, they would build the house in the box that's outlined, or say they wanted to build a bigger house and exceeded the, um, setbacks, they would come before potentially this board or to, uh, get approval for those, that variance relief. But you could build a conforming house, and I think that's what Mr. Farrell is showing.
Okay, thank you.
And Gab, you could build a, I mean, even if you build the conforming house, but frankly, they have to go to the zoning board because of the width and the frontage and the lot area, so they're gonna go to the board regardless.
Oh, so even if, even if the house were, uh, the structure were to fit the side yard, front yard, backyard setbacks, they still have to go because the lot's non-conforming. So somebody would potentially buy that lot as non-conforming and do a roll of the dice?
Essentially, you're right.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, is that the end of your testimony?
Uh, I believe it's, yes.
Okay, members of the board, we've asked questions of this witness, but is there, have you finished with your question, or should I open it to the public? Okay, hearing, no questions from the board. Um, members of the public, uh, if you would like to ask questions of this witness regarding this particular matter before the board, would you please, um, indicate so by waving your hand or whatever technol- technological way of, of making yourself known that you want to ask a question?
Mr. Farrell, can you unshare your screen, please?
Uh, yes, absolutely. Stop sharing.
It's my life easier.
Yeah.
No one in the public, Madam Chair?
Okay, close to the public. Well, this was a matter of discussion. Is there anything for us to vote on, make a motion for?
Yes, Madam Chair, it would require, uh, a motion to approve the, uh, pro- the proposed, um, subdivision. And I did prepare a resolution in case the board did want to move the matter.
Would, uh, someone on the board like to make a motion?
Madam Chair, Dawn Corcoran, I'd like to make the motion to approve the subdivision.
Do I have a second?
I'm sure Reverend Kenny, I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmed?
Yes.
And Madam Chair?
Yes.
And again, Madam Chair, I prepared a resolution if someone would like to move that.
Would someone make a motion regarding the resolution, please, on the board?
I'll make a motion, uh, that, that, that the resolution be approved in, in regards to the matter of the subdivision that was just, uh, discussed for the township.
Do I have a second?
Start.
I got some static there. Who was that who made that motion? Who was that second person?
I grabbed Alex.
Okay.
I'll get to it next time. Uh, Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmed?
Yes.
And Madam Chair?
Yes. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Farrell.
Thank you. Enjoy the rest of your evening, everyone.
Mm-hmm. Will do. You too. Item number thirteen, G W L Four Corp LLC. Mr. Prasad, Prasad?
Prasad. Good evening, Board, Madam Chair, Mayor Waller, members of the board. My name is David Prasad, uh, licensed attorney in the state of New Jersey, here tonight, uh, representing G W L Four Corporate LLC, who is seeking preliminary and final site plan with bulk variances. Um, the property in question is block five thousand and one, lot two point oh two. It is located in the LI five zone, and it's also known as Four Corporate Place. Uh, tonight, the applicant is seeking preliminary and final site plan approval for a property that is approximately three hundred and sixty-six thousand seven hundred and twenty-four square feet with seven hundred and thirty square feet, uh, seven hundred and thirty feet of frontage on Corporate Place. Uh, the rear of the property abuts, uh, Route two eighty-seven and has adequate screening, screening from the highway view. Uh, the site currently contains a one-story warehouse building with an attached smaller one-story office building and patio that is on the eastern side of the building. Ingress and egress to the site is accomplished via a three, via three separate points along Corporate Place, and is, the property is surrounded by other industrial and commercial uses with no nearby residential. Currently, the site is being used as a warehouse for a tenant. Uh, the applicant is seeking to continue a warehouse use on the site, just removing a portion of the building that is an office space. I do want to point out that the applicant has a holdover tenant in the building right now. Their lease was expired in May, and they continue to stay in the building only because they are searching for, they have another facility in Georgia, and that facility is not ready. We have a bunch of informal correspondence from that tenant stating that they will vacate the property by January of twenty twenty-five. We are trying to procure something in writing, so we can present that to the board. We have not been able to obtain that today. But we do have informal correspondence that does guarantee that they will leave in January of twenty twenty-five. Um, as part of this application tonight, as I mentioned, the applicant is proposing to remove a small one-story office building from the warehouse, which will essentially reduce the building in size. Um, with the removal of that office building, they want to construct thirteen truck loading spaces with overhead doors, eleven tractor-trailer parking spaces, and that's all on the eastern side of the building where that office building will be removed. Part of this application, the applicant is proposing two hundred and nineteen parking spaces, a small two-feet-deep bio-retention basin, landscaping improvements, and EV charging spaces. I also want to say that the, the New Jersey statute does not require EV charging spaces to be installed, but the applicant is willing to install them and believes that they are great for the environment. Um, and also, our engineer here tonight will go into more detail on those site improvements. Uh, we are seeking for, or we had applied for four variances as part of this application. One for a mini- minimum rear yard setback where fifty feet is required, and forty-nine point six-two feet is existing. That variance is not changing. Um, we are, we need a variance for off-street parking, where two hundred and eighty-six parking spaces are required, and two hundred and nineteen spaces are proposed with eight EV charging spaces. Uh, we were originally seeking a variance for the installation of two four-inch conduits along the frontage on Corporate Place. The applicant would like to mention to the board that this, uh, variance is no longer needed, as we will agree to install the conduits on the frontage. Additionally, and finally, the last variance is fencing around that small bio-retention basin that I had mentioned earlier. The applicant will agree to install fencing around that bio-retention basin. Tonight, I have four witnesses here. I have the applicant's representative, Bianca Marquez, from G W L Four Corporate. I also want to point out that we will probably use G W L Four Corporate and GTJ, uh, synonymously. It is the same company. GTJ is just the overarching company that owns the building. Um, we have our engineer, Michael Marinelli, who's here from Menlo Engineering Associates. And we have our architect, Matthew Walco, from Parrot-Somgen Architects LLC. Um, for the record, we do have three staff reports that were received from the township. The first is a DNR engineering report dated October eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. We have the township's staff memorandum dated October eighteen, twenty twenty-four. And we have a planning report from CME Associates dated October twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. If the board has no questions of me, I'd like to have our first witness sworn in, and we can begin testimony.
Can I proceed with, uh, witness?
Uh, I'd like to call, uh, Bianca Marquez as our first witness from the applicant's company.
Good evening.
Ms. Marquez, you could state your name, spell your last name for the record, and give us your professional address.
Sure. Uh, my name is Bianca Marquez. Uh, last name M A R Q U E Z. And my, uh, professional address is thirteen ninety-nine Franklin Avenue, Suite one hundred, in Garden City, New York, one-one-five-three-zero.
If you raise your right hand, you swear the testimony you give before this board will be the whole truth?
Yes.
Your witness, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Barlow. Uh, Ms. Marquez, uh, can you please, uh, give the board the benefit of your qualifications and your role with, uh, G W L slash GTJ?
Sure. Uh, good evening. My name is Bianca Marquez. I'm a property manager for GTJ Reed. I've been working with the company for a little over six years now. Uh, GTJ is a fully integrated, self-administered, and managed public, non-listed REIT. We engage in the acquisition, ownership, and management of commercial real estate. We have fifty industrial buildings located in New York, New Jersey, Connecticut, Delaware, and North Carolina, with the majority of the buildings concentrated in the tri-state area.
Thank you, Ms. Marquez. If you don't mind, can you please explain GTJ or G W L's experience in Piscataway?
Sure. Uh, we purchased Four Corporate Place along with five other buildings from seller companies back in two thousand and fifteen. We own over seven hundred thousand square feet of commercial space in Piscataway. We also engaged in a joint venture with Suddler at Two Corporate Place South. As mentioned before, we own other industrial properties in New Jersey, but one of the main things that attracted to us to Piscataway was the large commercial presence that it has, as well as its proximity to I two eighty-seven.
Thank you. Um, can you give the board the reasons why GTJ or G W L is seeking this approval tonight?
Uh, sure. Um, as you mentioned before, uh, we do have a current tenant, uh, IDa Nova. It's a holdover tenant. Their lease expired at the end of May, and we've had informal correspondence with them for months now on their plans to vacate the property. From my understanding, the tenant has a building in Georgia that they are relocating to, but the facility is not ready for them, which is why they continue to occupy our building. We are aware of the current condition that the tenant creates and has had many conversations with them on keeping the site clean and organized. Um, tonight, we're seeking approval on the proposed modifications to the building, as we feel that the changes presented will make the property more attractive and marketable to prospective tenants. Part of our plans, which our engineer Mike will also touch on, includes removing the office space, adding loading docks, and adding EV chargers.
I want to make it clear for the board that none of the conditions on the site, and we do mention, and they are mentioned in the township staff report, uh, the dumpsters, the pallets, the tarps, things that are almost haphazard on the site. Th- these are not caused by your company, correct? This is, these are items of the tenant.
Correct.
And you have had multiple conversations with them. They're just not very responsive on cleaning up the site?
Right, correct.
And the last conversation that you did have with them, they did agree that they were leaving at the end of January of twenty twenty-five. Is that correct?
Correct. They did send us an email stating that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And currently, uh, you have a tenant, but for future operations, you are doing these changes because you do not have a tenant in mind at the moment. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah. With the proposed modifications, it's intended to add the marketability of the site.
And the site is to remain a warehouse?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Uh, I have no further questions of this witness, if the board has any questions.
What members, do you have any questions of this witness?
Madam Chair, Dawn Corcoran, um. So, since our la- our workshop meeting, when all of these issues were brought to your attention by the staff report, has your current tenant made any effort whatsoever to clean up the site? I mean, the debris, the, again, pallets, um, dumpsters located.
It's, it seems that, uh, you know, when we, when we do go by the site, uh, they do clean it up, but then it just kind of goes right back to, you know, what, what it is with, with their use and, you know, uh, their business. So, yes, they have, but not how they should be.
And then, uh, you had mentioned there was a date in January. Is that a firm date? I mean, is that something, so, I know, I know your attorney said early on that informal correspondence between you and your tenant. Um, when do you expect to have a, something firm writing?
Uh, well, we did reach out to the tenant. Um, we, they said that they were going to be sending us something in writing today. Um, obviously, that, that has happened, so we're hoping maybe within, within the week. Um, you know, we are, we are, we understand, uh, the headaches. Um, we understand, you know, the, the mess, let's just quite say, put it that way, um, that they, that they make. Um, the, out of all our buildings that we do own in Piscataway, uh, this is uh, the, one of the issues that we have with them is just the uncleanliness and the haphazard, you know, the way that they keep the space, and um, in the past, we have reached out, uh, to the towns to issue. um, in the past, we have reached out, uh, to the towns to issue violations, just so it kind of pushes them to do what they gotta do and we are welcoming that, so. No, I'm ser- it's, it's, you know, it, it'll give them more of a push, to be honest with you.
And quite honestly, I'm only asking those questions because until the site is either cleaned up or you can show something in writing with a firm date, I'm really, I'm really honestly reluctant to vote on this. It's, it's just one of those things. As you said, your tenant just, apparently they'll just clean it up. And I don't know, maybe a week later, it looks like a mess. I went out there with our engineer, we couldn't even, we could barely get a circulate around.
Get around, yeah, correct, yeah.
I mean, it, it's, it, it's a big issue. Um, okay.
Ms. Corcoran, and, uh, the applicant is willing to hold off on a vote tonight if, if we can put on the application and we do want to present something in writing to the board, if that makes you more comfortable with a vote.
It does, quite honestly, and I would rather, you know, take another ride out there prior to our next meeting in December. Um, who knows? Maybe they did clean it up, or as you said, maybe we will have something in writing, but, um. It, it, yeah, it really is just a mess, as, as you said, it's.
Practically speaking, Mr. Prasad, in, in terms of getting the impetus to get them out, perhaps a complaint in landlord-tenant to vacate the premises, they're a commercial tenant. Um, their lease was up in May. Um, your client certainly has the right to their property back from holdover tenant. And maybe a complaint to vacate the premises would be kind of another kick in the, you know what, to get them, you know, to allow your client to move forward. Just something to think about.
No, we understand, and, and we were waiting for that official writing today, but I, we did have that discussion about filing a formal complaint.
Okay.
So hopefully we get you guys something soon and, and it will be a, a concrete date in January.
Yes.
Yeah, but I think that might be a good compromise in terms of at least getting all the testimony on the record today.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board, this witness?
Uh, Madam Chair, um, Councilwoman Cahill, um, I don't know if it's so much a, a question of, um, of this witness rather than, uh, are we going out there and trying to summons this company for property maintenance or not?
We certainly can, to answer your question. I mean, they had an application filed with our office, um. It was brought to our attention when we were preparing the staff report in terms of what type of condition this was in, um. I mean, if it doesn't get cleaned up, yeah, we certainly will do that at this point.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, so I guess there has to be a little bit of time, right? So if the landlord's been trying to get it cleaned up, this application comes in, this is when the township becomes more fully aware of the condition of the property, but I, you know, listen, uh, oh, maybe there is a question here is, let's say this tenant leaves and they leave all that crap behind. I'm, I'm gonna guess, Mr. Prasad, that your client then is footing the bill for the cleanup of the property. Is, is that about right?
Absolutely.
Correct.
We, they, they have expressed, I agree, but they have expressed the sentiment to go onto the site and clean it up for the tenant. However, they're not allowed to touch their property as it is not the owner's. Um, but they have tried, they have tried everything, and as Mr. Barlow recommended, if we can't get anything in writing from the tenants, we will probably take more serious action to remove them from the site.
And I would just suggest too, Dawn, that if the time period has lapsed, nothing's happened, that the township also may, you know, I don't know that they were gonna pay a fine, but, or if they get a warning first, but maybe that the township also has that on some sort of record that they're not keeping the property up. Because, you know, if you can't move around, if there's, you know, God forbid, any kind of issue over there, emergency services won't be able to get around, correct?
Okay, okay.
Also, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I was just gonna say, I, you know, when I, when I went out there, I went to our enforcement supervisor and he, he was, you know, it's just as, as, as Bianca had said, he had been out there in the past for other violations. He's well aware of the, um, he knows the property. Um, so we, again, we were just trying to give them a little bit of time to clean this up, but, um, unfortunately, that just hasn't been accomplished, so.
Yeah, and we have, as, as Bianca did mention, we have requested the town to go out there and issue violations to the tenant just to force them a little bit to do, do what they say they're gonna do a little quicker. Um, we understand the situation and it's definitely not something we want to bring to the township of Piscataway.
Any other questions? Okay, it's, uh, we'll have to open this up to the public. Um, members of the public, you've heard the testimony of this witness, Ms. Marquez. Does anyone in the public have any questions of this witness at this time? Please indicate by raising your hand.
No, I'm Madam Chair.
Thank you. Close to the public.
Madam Chair, this is Nathan Foot from, uh, C M E Associates. Um, I, I just have one question if I can jump in.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Foot.
Uh, so, one, one of the questions that we had brought up in our, uh, uh, review letter was regarding the, uh, the nature of the use. It's my understanding from the, uh, testimony uh, that was just provided, that, uh, they, that, um, Ms. Marquez, you, you don't have a tenant yet, um, but that it is proposed to be a ware- continue to be a warehouse use. Uh, there is a difference between warehouse use and warehouse fulfillment, uh, center. Um, so is there, um, a- a- and that was a calculation that was used in, uh, I believe in the engineers', uh, site plans. Um, so I guess the question is, is there possibility that any future tenant would be a fulfillment center? Or is this strictly going to be a, a warehouse-type use? The, the, the tenants that you would be looking at would be warehouses, or could they include fulfillment centers?
Um, yeah, right now, um, we're, we're looking at, at warehouse. Um, like I said, we don't have a tenant in place. Um, this is all just for future use, trying to make the site more marketable once I D Nova is out of the space.
Okay, um, thank you.
I'll be able to provide a little bit more as part of my testimony, Mr. Foot.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Would, would we have to open this up to the public, uh, after this question? Do you think, Mr. Barlow? Mr. Barlow?
I was talking to myself because I had unmute, sorry. Um, I, I don't think that's necessary. And if, and if you want to let Mr. Prasad put all his witnesses on and then just open it to the public once, you can also do that.
That's fine, okay, thank you. I think that's more appropriate for this application.
Yes.
Okay, your next witness?
Uh, my next witness is Mr. Michael Marinelli from Menlo Engineering Associates.
Okay, come forward so he can be sworn in.
Hello, everybody.
Hi, Mr. Marinelli. So if you could state your name, spell your last name and give us your professional address for the record, please.
Sure. It's Michael Marinelli, M A R I N E L L I of Menlo Engineering, located two sixty-one Cleveland Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey.
Raise your right hand. You swear the testimony you give before this board will be the whole truth?
I do.
Your witness, Mr. Prasad.
Mr. Marinelli, can you please, uh, give the board the benefit of your qualifications?
Surely. Uh, I'm a graduate of Rutgers University, class of nineteen ninety-nine. I've been practicing, uh, land use and site planning since that time. I'm a licensed professional estate in New Jersey. Uh, I've been so for seventeen some odd years, I've provided professional testimony in front of this board on many occasions.
And your license is in good standing?
It is.
Thank you. Uh, if you don't mind, can you please give a brief description of the subject property layout and the existing?
Um, he's accepted as a, as a.
Apologize. Thank you, Madam Chair. Surely, I will share my screen and.
Mr. Marinelli, if you could just, any exhibits you put up, we'll refer to them as A one and A two and, and just keep going, okay?
Surely, so if you could see my, see the screen now, uh, I've pu- put on there an existing conditions exhibit. Well, mark it as Exhibit A one. It's entitled For Corporate Place dated, uh, eleven thirteen, two thousand twenty-four. Uh, as you can see, this is an arrow representation of the subject site. Uh, the lot is designated as Block five zero zero one, Lot two point zero two on the tax maps of Piscataway Township. Property, property commonly known as For Corporate Place is located on the north side of Corporate Place, kind of sandwiched between, uh, two eighty-seven, which runs along the top of Exhibit A one, uh, and Corporate Place, which runs left to right on, uh, on the south or bottom side. Uh, the property has three access points, one on the most, uh, southeast corner, one on the most southwest corner, and then one central to the building closest to the southeast corner uh, of the existing warehouse portion of the structure. Uh, the overall property is eight point four-two acres and is located entirely within the L I five zone. Uh, as I stated, Highway, uh, Route two eighty-seven runs north of the project and all the other surrounding properties east, uh, south and west are a continuation of the L I zone with other industrial slash commercial, uh, uses in the existing condition. Uh, as you can see, the site is fully developed. Uh, it, it has a one hundred and fifty-one thousand seven hundred and twelve square foot uh, structure that includes a large rectangle off to the western side of the site, which is the warehouse portion that we were speaking of. Uh, and the white area to the east of that, a very irregular shape, is a sixteen thousand two hundred square foot existing office. Uh, there is parking for the site located all over, on all sides of the building. Uh, existing loading is, uh, four recessed door locations at the center driveway access. And I had been in front of this board maybe ten years ago, uh, when we added eight loading, loading doors on the southwest, uh, on the southern facade, but on the western side of it, uh, for some additional loading for this existing structure. Um, you can kind of see some of what, uh, was previously discussed about the, the shape of or how the site is handled. There, there's debris along the two eighty-seven side. There's haphazard trailers within some parking areas and blocking some drive aisles. Uh, and this is one of the better, uh, indicators of, of, of how the site, uh, has been misused by the, the, the current tenant, uh, that is, is soon to leave. If I can then refer to a second exhibit, uh, we'll, we'll mark this as Exhibit A two. Um, this exhibit is an arrow representation of the, um, site plan colorized. Um, if I could refer back to, uh, uh, A one quickly. This office space that I spoke of, the sixteen thousand two hundred square foot office space and patio that was discussed is in this treat alcove of that office space, is what the applicant is proposing to remove. Um, referring now to Exhibit A two, you'll see in that portion of the site, uh, we're making some modifications. We're, of course, removing that existing, uh, sixteen thousand square foot office and replacing it with some additional, um, loading areas for this existing warehouse that is to remain. Uh, in all, there will be thirteen new dock positions, which will be detailed by the architect, uh, in a little while. Uh, with A, and I'll zoom in real quick, uh, with a full, um, full circulated loading area and then twelve trailer storage spaces. This will allow ten, uh, future tenants, well, once this tenant is gone, to, to have access to the twelve dock positions that they have currently on the building and thirteen additional with eleven storage. So it, it would really make this building more appropriate for more users who need to utilize either more dock positions uh, and, and have the need for, uh, trailer storage spaces without impacting the existing parking spaces that are located, uh, around the, around the building. Uh, circulation in the proposed condition is relatively unchanged. The, the, you'll still have full circulation around the, the, around the building for emergency vehicles and emergency services. It'll still have three access points off of Corporate Place so that there's good access to each of the loading areas that would be present on, on the site. Uh, the, the proposed improvements in this area not only remove the sixteen thousand two hundred square foot office portion of the building, but also, uh, impact some of the existing car parking. Uh, we're, we're looking, that, that car parking would be reduced on-site, uh, to two hundred and nineteen physical spaces, uh, where two hundred and sixty-two are, are there in their existing condition. You'll note that on the easternmost side of the site, we are implementing eight new EV spaces. Uh, although this site doesn't require it by, uh, by law, uh, because we're not implementing any more than twenty-five new parking spaces. Uh, the applicant thinks that it's good to put them in it on, on day one. Of course, all would be installed, uh, prior to any C O being issued, uh, for the proposed, uh, building modifications. Um.
Mr. Marinelli, real quick, when you zoomed in, I thought you said it was gonna create twelve new trailer storage spaces, but I think that says eleven.
Uh, if I said twelve, I'm sorry, I apologize, I misspoke. It is eleven, is thirteen truck spaces and eleven storage spaces.
Okay, thank you, sir.
My apologies. So, uh, although we're not required because we're not implementing more than twenty-five new parking spaces, we are providing those EV charging, uh, locations. Uh, however, as noted by your professionals, we can't gain that two-to-one credit that would normally be associated uh, with the, um, EV spaces and the credit that goes along with that statute. Uh, and I'll get into that in more detail as I go through our parking variance in a little bit. Um, other improvements you'll see are, you know, general landscape, uh, additional lighting for, for a safe area there. Uh, and as Mr. Prasad had noted, uh, we, we'd also agree as a condition of the approval to provide the, uh, newly required uh, two-four-inch conduits, uh, along the entire frontage, as well as a junction, junction box and leader to the existing building. Uh, as you could, uh, as part of this, of course, the site would be cleaned up. Again, a lot of the, uh, stuff that is happening on the sites, the pallets, the, uh, tarp areas, the extra garbage containers, all of those are part of the process of the existing tenant that is going to be removed. So of course, the applicant as a condition of approval would agree to have all of that, uh, cleaned up and brought back into the previous, uh, approved state. Uh, as I mentioned, there is some improvements to lighting and landscape. We're, uh, proposing eight new shade trees, seven new evergreen trees, twenty shrubs, and, you know, seventy-two ground plantings. A majority of that is in the, the basin area, uh, between the proposed loading area and the Corporate Place frontage. Uh, you'll see there's also some evergreen trees, uh, proposed along the two eighty-seven frontage to kind of shield from, from that view a little bit better. And then along the eastern facade, some shade trees, uh, to supplement the existing uh, mature buffer, uh, with the adjoining, uh, that, that abuts the adjoining property's access road. Uh, we're also proposing lighting. There are two building-mounted lights at twenty-five feet high and four pole-mounted lights that, uh, cast a point zero three minimum, uh, and a one point seven six foot candle average throughout the, um, loading area that meets the ordinance standards. Uh, these lights are all LED, you know, if it, energy-efficient, downcasting, uh, lights, uh, dark sky compliant type fixtures. Uh, from a stormwater mani- management perspective, uh, we, we're not considered a major development because we don't disturb more than an acre, uh, of area and we're not proposing more than a quarter acre of new impervious. Uh, however, uh, the applicant did, did recognize that the, uh, what we were removing was, the impervious that we were removing was, uh, roof area, which is in engineering terms, considered clean runoff and replacing it with, um, some pavement and concrete for this loading area. Uh, so we took this opportunity to implement a, a green infrastructure B M P in the form of a, um, a relatively shallow. Um, again, it's only, I think it's three feet at its max point, but two feet a majority of it uh, in the, in, by means of a, a bio-retention swell or basin along that, that side. Uh, it was mentioned in both professionals' letters, I, and I believe the, uh, township planning letter that, uh, a variance relief would be sought, sought or needed to be sought for, uh, a fence around that basin. We're not going to seek that relief this evening. We'll provide as a condition of the approval, a fence around that basin. Uh, additionally, it was recommended, but not required by your engineer, to provide some sort of guide rail structure along the top of the retaining wall separating the loading docks, uh, and the basin. Uh, and we, we would, of course, agree to do that as a condition of the approval as well, uh, just to make sure that nobody is coming off this, again, relatively short three-foot-high retaining wall, um, and into the proposed basin. Uh, a- as noted, we have an existing non-conformance onsite. You'll note, uh, on the. You'll note, uh, on the northeast corner of the existing structure, uh, the building is at forty-nine point six feet, where fifty feet is required on the rear yard. Uh, in this instance, Route two eighty-seven is considered a rear yard, uh, for the purposes of zoning. From, and then as far as new variances go, the only one that we are proposing is for parking. Uh, this is a variance condition that exists on the site today. Uh, there is a parking, a parking variance of, that was granted as part of the previous approval that we obtained for this site, uh, for Suther Company's ten years ago. Uh, we are proposing two hundred and nineteen physical spaces where two hundred and eighty-seven spaces are required in the worst case scenario. And this le- lends to the question Mr. Foot had asked, uh, a little bit earlier. Um, because the applicant doesn't know who the tenant, tenant is going to be here. Um, they want to leave their options open. So, uh, in the worst case scenario, the, the, if it were to be a distribution center, uh, in lieu of a standard warehouse, the requirement would be two hundred and eighty-seven spaces. If it were a standard warehouse, the, the requirement would only be ninety-one spaces where we're providing two hundred and nineteen. So we're, we're basically providing double of a regular warehouse, but we're deficient sixty-seven spaces from a, a, a distribution center. Uh, the existing deficiency is a hundred and eight spaces, uh, for a distribution center at this site. Uh, so, and again, we're now only a sixty-seven, uh, space deficiency. So I think that variance could easily be granted, uh, because it, it's better than the existing condition and it, it calculates in for what is the worst, uh, worst case scenario. The reduct, we also have reduced the requirement of parking onsite by reducing the area of the building, right? We, we're taking sixteen thousand square feet of office off, and you'll hear a little bit from the architect about the mezzanine spaces within the existing warehouses that we're also removing, uh, that bring down the total requirement, uh, for parking on the site. Uh, Mr. Prasad had mentioned the three review letters. We have gone through all of them, uh, in detail and agree to comply with all of the comments and/or recommendations within, within them. Uh, the one other minor note that I would make, and I'll refer quickly to, uh, exhibit A one, on the northwest corner on the adjacent property for Two Corporate Place, uh, that treat area has a wetland, uh, associated with it. And there are potential buffers from that wetland that would encroach onto the subject site. But as I've presented in testimony, we're, we're a hundred, we're five hundred feet away from that existing wetland complex and have no impact on the wetland and no permit would be required, uh, for any disturbance of that existing wetland. But I thought it was appropriate, since it was mentioned in both your professional's letters, to at, at least address the, the wetland comment. That is my direct testimony. Should anybody have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Um, could you, um, remove your exhibit from the screen? Thank you. Members of the board, do you have any questions of this witness regarding his testimony?
Uh, Madam Chair, Councilwoman Cahill, just one quick question. Um, what, uh, exactly does, uh, trailer storage look like? Is that, are those just parking spots essentially?
Yes, so just, it's where they, you would leave the trailer portion, not the cabs, but the trailer portion. Uh, in some instances, in most instances, they're left there empty. Into, or, uh, or in staging where there isn't a door currently available and, and stuff needs, needs to be offloaded. It's a temporary storage space so that they're not blocking drive aisles or out on Corporate Place. They have a place to reside, uh, while they're either empty waiting to be loaded or full waiting to be emptied.
Any other, any other questions?
One question comes to mind. Uh, there, there is no, uh, hazmat material to be stored here at all. Is, is that correct?
None is proposed. That's correct.
Thank you.
All right, um.
Madam Chair, uh, Nathan Foot, uh, again, um, our, uh, the CME review letter, uh, had brought up, uh, several, uh, NJ EMS, uh, uh, sites associated with this particular property. Uh, only one, we identified only one, uh, as being, uh, open. That was, uh, I'm not gonna read out the, the whole number, but, uh, it was HW non-regulated. Uh, item number eleven on page fifteen of our, uh, report. Uh, Mr. Marinelli, do you have any, um, uh, testimony regarding that, uh, particular, uh, item from our, uh, letter?
I do not. Um, I, I note that you listed the, the, um, and, uh, NJ EMS, uh, numbers for hazardous waste. I don't know what that open, uh, permit is for. I, I can only assume that it's associated with the existing tenant, uh, that will be removed once they leave. They would have to close that permit.
Okay, um, then. See, so, so several of our, uh, so, item number eight on page fourteen of our, uh, review letter just deals with, uh, a number of different items that we requested, uh, further information on, um, in, in regards to the, uh, the site, site plan review. Uh, can that information be provided?
Of course, we can update as a condition of approval the zoning table in, in order to clarify these existing conditions. I would only note that, uh, all of these are existing conditions onsite, uh, that are not being exacerbated or changed in any manner. Uh, but we can, of course, provide them in an updated zoning table that would, uh, clarify, uh, those requirements of the zoning ordinance.
Okay, uh, that's all I had. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Um, we're going to save the questions to the public for all of the witnesses. So, um, sir, do you have any other witnesses?
Yes, Madam Chair, I have one final witness. It's our architect, Matthew Walco from Parrot Somerton Architects.
Okay, you may call him, mm-hmm.
Mr. Wolchek, I'm sorry, butchering it, Wal, Walchko. Um, if you could state your name, spell your last name for the record and give us your professional address, please.
Matthew Walchko, uh, Parrot Somerton Architects. We're located at four thirty-nine, I'm sorry. Last name Walchko, W O L C H K O. Our, uh, address is four thirty-nine, Route forty-six east in Rockaway, New Jersey, zero seven eight six six.
Raise your right hand, sir. You swear the testimony given before this board to be the whole truth?
Yes, I do.
Your witness, Mr. Prasad.
Thank you, Mr. Barlow. Uh, Mr. Walchko, can you please give the board the benefit of your qualifications as an architect?
I am a registered architect and a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. Seated Bachelor, uh, Science in Architecture from Pennsylvania State University and Masters of Architecture from Arizona State University. And I have a certificate in Historic Preservation Studies from New York University. I'm also a lead green associate.
And have you testified before boards in the state of New Jersey before?
Yes, I'm a former chairman of the Garfield Planning Board and also a former member of the Garfield Zoning Board of Adjustment.
And your architectural license is in good standing?
Yes, both my architect's and planner's licenses are current.
And ask if the board can accept this expert?
Yes, Mr. Walco is tech, is accepted.
Mr. Prasad, are you offering him just as an architect or is, I think he said he's also a licensed planner?
Planner, yeah.
He is also a licensed planner, but we are just offering architectural testimony.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Walco, Walchko, can you please describe, uh, the interior changes that the applicant is proposing to the site?
Right now, uh, in addition to the, uh, the approximately sixteen thousand square foot, uh, appendage to the building, there are multiple, uh, mezzanine areas internal to the, the warehouse building. And it's the intention to have these removed, uh, to make the floor area of the warehouse building essentially a, a flat plate and make it as wide open as and as flexible as possible. This, uh, includes other areas that will become, uh, the, the easterly side of the existing warehouse where that, uh, office building is removed. That will be modified to incorporate the loading bays. So these will be the, the standard, uh, ten foot wide loading bays with low dock levelers. And there will also be some provisions because we do not have a current tenant. Uh, we do not know what the, what type of interior improvements exactly would be required for any ancillary or, uh, additional office space. But we have been, uh, the brokerage consultant for the owner has recommended that the, with the nature of this building, that there would be anywheres from between twenty-five hundred to five thousand square feet of ancillary office space required. And I believe it's that five thousand square foot limit that was included in the zoning table so that the vast majority of the building is intended to be used for open warehousing space and with the potential for a small amount of accessory ancillary office space. At some point, when a tenant, if and when, say, whatever the proposed tenant would require, but this would be very minor to the usage of any new tenant.
And we've seen it on the, uh, on the engineering plans, but just a little more information, if you can. Um, the exterior of the building is not being changed anywhere else other than that eastern side. Is that correct?
No, the existing frontage along, uh, Corporate Place is going to remain as it is. And all the modifications would be on the easterly side of the building that is going to be facing the modified, the new truck loading zones and trailer parking areas. But these will, it's going to be, it's a utilitarian building right now that is very basic with some, uh, some masonry and the majority of that side is going to be the overhead doors for the truck loading base.
Thank you, Mr. Walchko. Uh, there was not, there were not many, or if any at all, uh, architectural comments for this application, seeing that a warehouse is typically just a big box. Um, so that is all the questions I have for Mr. Walchko, if the board has any questions.
Um, members of the board, do you have any, uh, questions of Mr. Walchko, um, individually? Hearing no questions from the board, I'm gonna open it up to the public now for this, both this witness as well as Mr. Marinelli, Mr. Marinelli. Um, members of the public, if you have any question for either of those, these two witnesses, would you indicate by waving your hand?
Ms.
Oh, I'm Madam Chair.
You don't hear anyone? You don't see anyone?
I don't see, and I unmuted them. I gave them permission to speak, so.
There, there was a, there's a question though in the, not that this is really pertinent. There's a question in the chat, just who is the current tenant in the building to be demolished? I assume that's the tenant we were, you were discussing earlier that you're trying to, um, get out of the building.
That is correct. The, uh, the existing office building attached to the warehouse is essentially just one building that's used by that one tenant. And we, and they are trying to get them out as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, if I can just prepare, oh, I'm sorry.
Um, then it's closed to the public once, if we ask, we ask that particular question, answer that particular question. Closed to the public. And, uh, now, board members, any other, any other questions? Of this app, for the whole application? Um, Mr. Poseod, would you like to make a statement or are you ready to have us, uh, make a motion one way or the other?
Uh, I'd just like to summarize very quickly about, uh, the applicant.
Do so, mm-hmm.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, as mentioned, the applicant does own five buildings in Piscataway over seven hundred thousand square feet combined. Uh, it is a very successful commercial tenant and a very good, uh, corporate neighbor to Piscataway. Unfortunately, this is the only building in town that they have a, uh, difficult tenant that they are trying to actively get out. Um, as mentioned, we will try to obtain something in writing from the current tenants that they will be vacating, um, as they said in their correspondence in January of twenty twenty-five. Um, we also think that the parking plan that was created by removing that office for the trailer storage and the loading spaces makes it more appealable sight to the township and to anyone driving down Corporate Place as it moves all of the trailer storage to the rear of the building away from the frontage. Um, the tenant, uh, the applicant is happy to add the EV charging spaces and making them operational as a condition of a CO, if the board looks favorably on this application. And we'd just like to thank you for your time tonight. We appreciate giving us a chance to put on our testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. Members of the board, you've heard this full application. What is your pleasure?
Madam Chair, I, I'm under the impression, Mr. Barlow, that we're gonna hold off on a formal vote tonight. Yeah, I think it would be appropriate based on what the applicant had indicated and the concerns of the board and the board's professionals as to the tenant and the current condition of the site for a motion to just carry the application to the December meeting, at which time, understanding the record's closed, other than, uh, assuming Mr. Perswati, Perswati will either appear or hopefully provide ahead of time, uh, confirmation as to when the tenant is leaving or, or preferably that the tenant has left, um, if, if that's the board's pleasure.
Board members, what is your pleasure?
I agree.
Are we going to withhold it, uh, the vote or are we gonna make the vote and hold it, it's, it's, um, final vote? How, how are we gonna do that?
I, I think based on what, what I indicated, I heard from the board members is it would be an, a motion to carry the vote and the hearing to the December meeting in order to allow the applicant time to provide the information that was requested as to the tenant.
That is, uh, Reverend Kenny, I concur with that because I was at the site also and it's been carried on, uh, quite a few, quite a few times. We had a discussion about it before and it hasn't been cleaned up as of yet. And, uh, I see, uh, a little problem with this and, uh, it should have been addressed a little earlier, providing that we were gonna get this, uh, application approved. Uh, I have no problem with the application being approved, but I would carry it on to December's meeting and, uh, see where the applicant, who is at, at this place now, whether he moves and, uh, the situation is cleaned up in that area.
Do I hear a second?
Don Corcoran, a second.
Walco.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmed?
Yes.
And Madam Chair?
Yes.
All right, so it's carried to December eleventh, twenty twenty-four.
Exactly. No further notice will be required. If anyone's here for this, you won't get a new notice in the mail, but, um, it'll be carried to the December eleventh meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mayor Waller, members of the board. Hope you have a great night.
Thank you, and everyone have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion, motion to adjourn. Anyone, do I have a second?
No move. Again, after Thanksgiving.
All in favor? Aye.
Have a great Thanksgiving, everyone.
Take care.
Take care.